They were throwing cards here and there and here and there. And I thought, they're not thinking. Because when you start down the path, you decide what's here and what's here and what's gonna fit on the path. And then on further down the path, you look and see what's on both sides of you before you put something there. You have to think about what you're gonna put on the path, not just throw anybody, anything there. I don't think that money should be spent on building a path until you get Center City up and running. Center City is your problem. And we heard about it several months ago. For 25 years, nobody would say out loud or to the press, it's because of the homeless, the low, the poor income, and the immigrants. If you take a survey of who's downtown, I bet you will find that a lot of those people are from out of town. Because when I used to take real estate courses down the road, other real estate agents would mention to me about, Washington County has all these good benefits, so we send them up the road. And also, the Virginia church that dropped those people off on Franklin Street years ago, that couldn't speak English, and they just dropped them off there. They're still working, bringing refugees into the United States. They get paid $250 for each person. Then they drop their group off and they give a couple people a few hundred dollars. Now, this is what I heard from a church lady. She told me that they came in recently and the church ladies went to the church council and said that we couldn't handle anymore because we can't take care of the people we already have here. So, the church left. And the other thing, I have seen on television in the past two years, advertisements saying, "Go to Washington County." And at the bottom of the screen, it said, "Paid for by", and I forget the name of the church, but it was a church that paid to tell people to come here. Okay. The other thing, I think we need a 24-hour reach program. I think the YMCA could be used. You'd have a computer room, you'd have a learning room, and you'd have a place where you could put people. Like the lady in Smithsburg that they found sleeping in her car, they were able to get enough money together and put her in a hotel for a while, but I don't know how long that's gonna last. To take care of this problem with the homeless, the poor, and all these people that are coming in to get our benefits, I'm sure with a project like that, you can get funding from the state government and the federal government. A year and a half ago, you had a city manager that has already left. I suggested at that time that you have a luncheon and invite every realtor from the Pinmore Association, you have almost 200, with an RSVP, to bring them to the luncheon, tell them what you're doing, ask them for their help. The real estate agents are one of the best resources that you have in Washington County. And you're not using them like you should. Back when I worked in the 70s and 80s, they came to town, they helped with the projects. You all haven't asked them to help. They've got investors, they've got developers. Why haven't you asked the realtors to work with you? I don't know. Thanks for listening to me.
Thanks for your thoughts. There's no one else that has signed up to speak at Citizen Comments? Is anyone desirous to speak? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry? Step up to the microphone and please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Physioc. I live around Potomac Street, right after the library.
Okay.
And my family's apartments do maintenance. And so, maybe I'll stay there and maybe I don't. And I'm not really sure, but it's like 1:55 to 1:59, something in that range. This mic is on? I'm sorry, I've never been here. I feel like a foreigner.
Well, welcome. What would you like to share with us this evening?
Okay, well...
I did forget to remind folks, we are televising and recording these meetings, and we try to limit Citizen Comments to five minutes.
Yeah, that's good to remind people. I've never been there. And I feel like a foreigner, but everything that one lady said, I see her points. And I was thinking that city council... I've never been here before, but I would like to schedule hosting so that issues could be talked about, like over lunch. Things like this. So, well, my email address is jasonphysioc, that's P-H-Y-S-I-O-C at gmail dot com. And all I have is a phone, I have no computer, I'm partially homeless. I don't know how to speak in front of a mic, I've never done this before, but, well, I had one suggestion that maybe people could consider. And maybe everybody get rich off this. Next time we see a storm coming, those bike lanes could be turned into ski lanes, and nobody has to sign a waiver, you know where you live. Or you know where you're visiting. And you will never sue anyone because bike lanes were turned into ski lanes, and everyone respects that. But that's just a suggestion.
Thank you for sharing.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, have a good night. All right, moving on to city administrators' comments.
Again, I just want to...
...to do something great in this city. And this may sound a little strange, but one of my prayers the last couple years is, "May Hagerstown become a Jesus city, where his name is spoken in honor more than any other." And I really thank you all for giving me an opportunity to be here, thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's the last individual that's signed up to speak. If anybody else wishes to speak...
Mr. Rick, could I just make a small comment? I would appreciate that if you would give me ten times previous speakers that you just had because of the conflict that has...
Jimmy, actually, you've got more time than what he has. Anybody who wishes to speak, step up to the microphone, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Jason Physioc. I don't have a permanent address right now, but I'm Hagerstownian all the way, north, south, east, and west. I just wanna give a suggestion, a safety suggestion for the bike lanes. Some of the bike lanes have like debris and chunks of rock and stuff that could be dangerous. And I just suggest that you sweep them once in a while. And maybe even, I mean, some of them are really bad on North Prospect Street and headed up towards Pennsylvania Avenue. There's like a section through there that's really bad. And it's, and some of it's around turns, where trucks are coming around the turns and stuff. And if somebody is having trouble, you know, that could be a big issue. And some, I mean, I don't know if a street sweeper could do it. I mean, some of these areas have like chunks of rock everywhere. So, you might have to get like a skid loader with a sweeping thing on it or whatever. But, yeah, that was my only suggestion.
Well, thank you.
And also, well, as I was listening to somebody else talk about the Arts Entertainment District and stuff, I really appreciate the path. And I've seen, I've seen that path that goes, you know, from downtown to like the city park or whatever. I've seen some visitors coming by and admiring, you know, and I think it's a good thing. And I do have one more, one more thing that I'd like to throw out there. This might sound silly, but to increase the Arts Entertainment District, I got this crazy idea of starting a tropical parrot breeding facility and training facility downtown. If anybody could help me get that along the way, that would be awesome. My email is jasonphysioc@gmail.com, it's all lowercase, P-H-Y-S-I-O-C.
Thank you, Jason.
Here's everywhere electric gates. I wonder where I will start seeing the sandbags around the police station with armed guards patrolling it. I feel the police chief came from the big city, and he brings unfounded fear and paranoid with him from the city. And I went to Officer Wright with the City Police Department, Internal Affairs, and I asked him for an investigation for what I felt was the unfounded actions against the chief of police against me. I don't feel anything's being done. I feel that there should be a separate citizens committee set up, advisory committee or an overview committee of complaints against the police department, because now if you complain against the police department, you complain to them. And there's no overview by the citizens or anybody else to see what's going on. So, I'd recommend that. Now, the different issue would be the president. He's a pathological liar, willing to say or do anything to make himself look good. A Republican Congress unable to govern. This is why Republicans should not be elected into the office. The Republicans want the affordable care defeated so billions of dollars could be used to give tax breaks to big corporations and the rich. A presidential election commission, which is a sham. A dangerous president threatened nuclear weapons, the start of which would kill millions of people, send radiation around this planet, cause a nuclear winter, and destroy life on this planet. This president has to be stopped by impeachment and votes. The president, when the facts are clear, is still fake news. A president that pits one person against another in this society, the immigrants against society. A president stating you can say Merry Christmas again and pits a religious community against society. A president stating patriotic views when he did everything he could to escape military service. A president selecting 27 lower court federal judges as of mid-July, three times Obama's total, double the total of Reagan, Bush 41, Clinton, and Bush 45 combined, destroying a judicial system from the inside. A president wanting to start, sign legislation made by lobbyists that would, that would limit a cap of $250,000 for plain and suffering disabilities or medical malpractice. The president stating he could shoot someone in Times Square and still get votes and elected. This president is a madman and must be stopped by impeachment or votes. There's a lunatic in North Korea, a psychopath. This country has its own psychopath. And I feel, I feel it's just a sad situation. And going, going to the Republicans, that even the ones that represent this community, as far as Brett Wilson, Sarah Fonny, and Parrott, there was, there was an exchange I made with them last year on the Domer Law where they, on alcohol. I told them they didn't go far enough because they should, they should have it on a license where a person has the ability to buy alcohol. And they said, they said they would lose income on that. And I was astounded by that because they're putting money over a person's life. And I feel that Brett Wilson, he's running for a judgeship. If he didn't want to be a legislator for this community, then he shouldn't have run for it. He should just waited it out, run for the judgeship if he wanted it. But it's clear that he doesn't want to run, doesn't want to represent this community. I don't feel he should be reelected for this community, thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Okay, those are the only ones who were signed up to speak. Now, if anybody else wishes to speak, please step up to the podium and give us your name and address.
For now, I live at 52 Randolph Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland. I only had a few suggestions, two suggestions really. But one of them is a big one. But first, I'd like to just thank you, city council, because I made a suggestion before for cleaning up the bike lanes where there's a lot of debris in the bike lanes and could cause traffic accidents. And that was taken care of like promptly, and so, thank you. Not just thank you from me, but thank you from all the bike riders. One suggestion, I just want, real quick suggestion about the public events that we have around town. I was riding my bicycle through the fairgrounds the other day, and I saw a lot of people with their dogs in the little fenced in part, I guess that's a dog park. I haven't been to that one yet, because I don't have a dog. But I was thinking, like, for winter events, you know, dog park is great for winter events. That's my first suggestion. Now, this next suggestion, it might come as a little bit of like a, you know, you gotta think about it for a long time. Might seem a little silly, but it's not. Okay, where do I start? I forgot the city council meeting was today, so I didn't write anything yet. But I've been talking to people for years about this. Where the old hospital was. I have just a little suggestion towards like what to do with the property. I'm not saying that, you know, my suggestion is like, you know, the best way to go, but I just wanna put an idea out there to where other people could maybe improve or suggest similar or something. But, and part of the reason why I'm gonna say this is because, is I think city council would be best to say this because one time I submitted a patent, and there was a little bit of a joke behind it. But I didn't have money to fund it myself, because I'm poor. And they stole it, and I called it the poo stick. And then Lysol Ready Brush came out four months later. Factories produced it, and Lysol Ready Brush came out. But I called it the poo stick, and I had a whole advertising campaign already in motion, but I didn't have money to fund it. But, okay, my suggestion for where the old hospital used to be, where I was born, where one of my, two, two of my children were born, is, it sounds a little silly, but I'd like to call this proposal Dodgeball Mall, okay? Dubai will take off with this if nobody close by will. And financiers will come from anywhere if they just get on point with what I'm saying. But, okay, community and activities go hand in hand. Community activities and business, as usual, like everywhere. Okay, I call this Dodgeball Mall. Now, at that property, its ideal location, traffic, traffic would never be a problem because, you know, two highways already right there. We got the parking deck, we got the parking lot out back. We could build a little skyscraper there. We could put business, a mall type of business, and community activities together. That's why I called it Dodgeball, because I love dodgeball, and nobody can coach it except me. All I'm saying, like, okay, if you put business and activities in the same location, you have a local spot. You have a local spot where community gets its name from, and it takes it to every community that's local. Every little small neighborhood has their own world champions, you know, like the wrestler. I have a lot to say about this, and I'd like to talk more about it, but I don't have very good transportation or communication. But as I said before when I was here, my Gmail is jasonphysioc, P-H-Y-S-I-O-C at gmail dot com. And that's probably the easiest way to communicate with me. But I would love to hear conversations started. It's, it's not, I call it Dodgeball Mall like I called the poo stick before the Lysol Ready Brush came out. Dubai will take off with it if nobody else does. We could be the first. Dodgeball Mall. You can't coach it.
Thank you, Jason. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I'd like to speak to you about the...
Name and address, please.
My name is Brett Fratiani. I live at 132 North Locust Street, right around the corner, where the gangs have taken over. The police have been there, sometimes it's four or five times a day, every day. Every day. This has got to end. And the thing of it is, they're all juveniles. So, so we can't really... I don't mean to be a smartass about this, but you know, if they was over 18, I'd hit them. But I don't wanna touch the kids. I'm afraid of getting in trouble over that. Now, they, they, just today, already today, the cops have been there three times. Today, so far. They're little hoodlums. They're creating a nuisance. And they, they said, they looked right at me and said... I was born there, I lived there for about 30 years. I moved to Florida, and then I moved back about two and a half years ago. They have told me, "This is no longer your block, this is my block now. We own this." They were there to deceive me. They're down there right now, right now. And as soon as the cops come, they all splatter. They just dissipate. They run back through the little sidewalk, you know, the little alleyways between the houses, and they disappear. They run through the backyards and they're gone. And as soon as the cops pull out, there they are again. They're all right back there. And I've been trying to help the police. The drug problem down there is just, it's terrible. We got people down there, and I will sit here and tell these officers, "I'll give them everybody." We got one guy down there, he's got 12 pit bulls. He's raising them to fight him. Okay? And then we got three or four of them on this street that are all, they're into opiates, the pills. I mean, my new nickname on the block is cop caller. Which I do. I'm not afraid to say I do. You know, we, we own two properties there, and actually, we wanna sell them because we want the hell out of that neighborhood. But we're not gonna get anything for them because nobody will buy them. Nobody wants to live there. I mean, I'm almost afraid to live there myself. Two nights ago, they were running down the street. One had an AK, and the other one had a double barrel. And they were chasing each other down the street. Saturday, no, I'm sorry, that was, that would have been Friday night. Saturday night, the cops showed up again. And as soon as they come down the street, alls they do, you could see them all handing off their guns. And they would take off down through the alleyway. And they've already threatened to kill me. This is becoming a very serious problem. And the thing of it is, the kids, they don't even live there. They're, Norman, which I'm sure these gentlemen behind me know, he lives up on Antietam Street, and the other ones live down on Randolph. But they, they seem to think that they own this area of town. They was down there tonight, writing all over the walls, putting their gang signs on the walls on the house on the corner of East Avenue and Locust, East Avenue and North Locust, of course. And this is, it's really becoming a problem. A very serious problem. Someone's gonna get hurt. And I'm afraid it's gonna be one of us older folks who live there that is gonna end up hurt.
Could you, could you do me a favor?
Yes, sir.
Could you get with Sergeant Knoedt and the chief and maybe have a conversation?
Oh, I believe he was a gentleman there the other night, wasn't he? No. It was the sergeant on duty.
It's probably, it's probably better if, if you got with them individually and had a conversation.
I'll, I'll tell you what, they already call me a cop caller, so...
Well, I understand, but...
I'll turn every damn one of them, and I'm not afraid to. When I grew up there, it was a peaceful neighborhood.
Right.
One of your neighbors. Yes, sir. I had a lengthy conversation, and I promised him I also would speak to the chief and the sergeant tonight about the situation. I've known you for a long time, and I just tell you that so you know that I appreciate what you're saying isn't just some song and dance and some crazy person getting up telling us how bad it is. I understand what your situation is. Yes, sir. And I would hope that with what Mr. Burkett said and with what you're saying, you're right in the exact same area, that we may be able to talk to our folks about some real, some real targeting of that area, because I understand what's going on. I mean, it, it's really bad. It is bad. I have no problem doing that. Okay, I just want to let you, the council members know what's going on, you know? I appreciate your time.
I appreciate the information, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? Jason. Real fast, Jason, real fast.
What I was proposing about the Dodgeball Mall, the whole idea of it, you know, youth is a problem with, with what our neighbor was talking about. Youth is a problem. But what I'm proposing kinda unites a little bit of council with youth. Like I said, nobody can coach dodgeball. But me.
All right.
And it would, I think it would be a very good idea to just push the community into something that they're gonna love.
Right. Thank you, Jason.
I gotta figure this out on my glance phone. I ain't got no good light, so I got this awesome ass flashlight thing. It's so fucking bright, it's like a high beam. I don't know, I have my facial paralysis. Okay. Now, it was, it was a little bit wor- damn, that's bright. Let's fuckin' it up. It was a little worse when it first happened. But... I'm starting to get, gain the vacuum, uh... In my side of my head. I can shut this eye and open that one, but I can't shut my right eye and open the other one. Now, what the fuck is wrong with that? How can your brain go haywire to where you can't shut your right eye and open your left? What the fuck? She went haywire like that, but it's kinda, it's a little bit better than it was a couple days ago. Or a week or so ago. You can't really tell it unless I smile. But I gotta smoke weed and smile. Sorry, it's the best fucking thing for healing and bringing smiles rather than like boo hoo. It's the best fucking remedy for boo hoo. It's fucked up, I get assaulted. Fucked up. I get assaulted. And how I repay them is by fucking promoting free rent, legalize marijuana, and family fucking reunion. This is the house of Jason. With the fucked up fucking facial paralysis face. This is crazy. How's that ever paying it? I'm I'm the fucking assault victim. They fucking lured me. They lured me. They just talked nice to me, I talked nice to them. Whole little group, little gangsters. Little fucking, they wanna start a family. They wanna start a family or whatever. I don't know if they, I don't know who the fuck they were, but it was a bunch of little black kids. Not even racist, but they were black kids. It was probably like eight of them. I don't even really remember. I drank like two beers, two naughty daddies. Well, one and a half naughty daddies and then I had a full one still in my bag. And I went to the fucking, I was trying to go to the homeless shelter. I have my bag in my hand with all my clothes. You know, as I walked down by the by the Hegger Park, headed towards the um fucking the Reach Shelter in Heggers Town, Maryland. The homeless shelter for the cold weather shelter, whatever. I saw these kids, they was walking the same direction I was and I was walking at a bit faster pace than they were, whatever. Got to talking to them, you know, one of them's fucking driven a ball like like hard on Globetrotter, like fucking just doing amazing shit. And I'm like, damn, I probably tripped myself if I tried that. But uh and then another one was uh riding a little little BMX bike, doing little little wheelies and shit. Doing nice shit, you know, and I'm like complimenting them, I'm like, what, damn, this is nice, you know? And eh they was talking to me nice. All the conversations was was nice. We get to the front of the park, towards the front of the park, he's conversating as we walk down the road, down the path. And and one dude, he's like, he's like, hey, you come chill with us at the pavilion for a little bit? And I'm like, nah, I gotta get to the cold weather shelter, I'm I'm homeless right now. I think I told him I just got out of prison just a little while ago. I'm I'm fucking homeless, I mean, you know, I got my bag of clothes, like a half a trash bag with just a little bit of like dumb shit. And he's like, he's like, oh, you got a minute? And so I was like, well, I'll chill with you for a minute. You know, cause I I done drank a beer and a half, I'm a little bit jolly, you know? Uh uh one and a half naughty daddies. And so and so I went and sat down at the pavilion with him, which eh they actually like lured me back into the park, like we backtracked to get to the pavilion. And I sat down, I'm chilling, I'm happy, I'm like, damn, I just made some new friends. You know, I sit down at the at picnic table and and then dude asked me to come sit down, he's sitting across from me. And the other ones are just kinda like doing a thing to the sides and shit. Ten seconds after I sat down, he's still talking to me nice, being friendly and shit. Ten seconds after I sit down, bam, motherfucker cocks me. Like I I don't know what the fuck's happening, I just kinda jarred me. I already had fe- brain trauma from a year ago, I got jumped in Ocean City, Maryland. And I was flown to shock trauma in Baltimore, where where Cor- Ben Carson used to work. And I had fucking neurosurgeons and shit, eh I don't know, that's a whole nother story. That's eh that's a fucking interesting story, cause I'm eh eh my my ex. I don't know, it's a long story. To make a long story short, all kinds of fucking crazy shit happened. She put me in prison to protect who who jumped me at Ocean City. And I sat in jail for three weeks praying and praying and praying and on the very day that I fasted, while I was in Washington County detention center, the very day that I fasted, I only fasted for one day. The very day I fasted, her heart stopped and she died. God took her life because she was trying to take mine. And she was trying to protect who assaulted me. That's not the way to protect them. The way you protect them is by preventing them by giving them a heart, so they never do it again. I give you fucking free rent. I give you fucking legalized marijuana in the house of Jason. Fucking all bullshit dismissed. I give, if I give you free rent, can you be trusted with this shit? If I give you marijuana, so that none of us are in that fucking dumbass, all this pharmacy, all this dumbass pharmacy, if I give you this shit, can you be trusted with it, for real? Anyway, back to the fucking story, but the motherfucker cocked me, like one of them cocked me, then like 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 three of them, I don't know how many. Three of them coming from one side and then on the other side, fucking jumping over the tables even, I think a couple of them did. I I don't know, I can't, I my memory of it is like really fucked up. My I got bleeding on my brain. Nah, I think it was like two of them or three of them ju- jumped out, eh eh jumped over the fucking tables. When it all started, I don't know what the fuck happened. They didn't rob me. They didn't rob me. Well, I didn't have my hat, but I found that the next day. And I thought maybe they took that or maybe I lost it in the process. Um well, not eh it wa- it wasn't the next day I found this, I found a different one. But then I found this like a week later, laying at my um my little storage spot that I live in, fucking storage spot, where I can store my clothes and I'm slightly out of the fucking rain and wind. Well, anyway, I woke up next day, fucking bleeding out my ear, real fucking bad. All my whole ear was just a big fucking scab with dry blood, little flaky twinkly shit, like fucking, like fresh leaking constantly. And and I couldn't even get it get it together enough to make a fucking phone call to my case manager at Turning Point. I couldn't get it together enough, my my fucking head was so scrambled, like I I just I just wanted to fucking lay, lay and just I don't know, just get it get it together a little bit before I made the phone call. And I called my, called my uh case manager at Turning Point, they help people that's in fucked up situations. Heggers Town they do, it's just fucking everywhere and we need to make this shit bigger. But anyway, she, my case manager, she said, eh you, I mean, you're pretty fucked up, you should, you gotta go to the hospital. You know, this is, I this, you could be be fucked up. I didn't know I had bleeding on my brain like I did. Like, I didn't know. I I mean, I was fucked up, but I'm still alive, whatever, you know? In a fucking hospital, I knew, you know, they can't really fucking do anything except say, oh, let it heal. And then prescribed me dumbass pharmacy shit that actually makes me feel like fucked up, head fucking like medicine head and all kinds of shit, made me feel sick the whole time I was in the hospital. It wasn't until I got out of the hospital and I smoked some marijuana that I actually started to feel better and I didn't have any kind of side effects. No kind of side effects whatsoever. Eh and and then I started looking at these fucking documentaries and shit. Medical marijuana, it is the only thing that will remove pharmacy. It is the only thing, some marijuana, that I actually started to feel better and I didn't have any kind of side effects. No kind of side effects whatsoever. Eh and and then I started looking at these fucking documentaries and shit. Medical marijuana, it is the only thing that will remove pharmacy. It is the only thing that'll fucking remove all these dumbass dope fiend moves. People don't do dope fiend moves when it's fucking marijuana. Fucking idiots. People don't do dope fiend move, du- dope fiend fuck, du- people don't do cruddy shit when they got free rent. I didn't ask to be born. Nobody did. Why do you put a fucking hole in my wallet? And a hole in 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 my, and the people I love? You put a hole in my neighbors, you put a hole in my children? And what the fuck did you do to my parents? You put them in a whole state of mind they can't be trained out of. They're stuck in the past government. The way things used to work. And it's hard for them to see. That there's a whole lot of perspective. Their view is nerd, fuck the damn fuck all this shit. Anyway. Anyway, how am I gonna pay people? Give them free rent? For assaulting me, what the fuck? My face ain't quite as bad today and plus I I ain't got no weed. But it's it's fucked up. It's really fucked up. It's more fucked up than you think. And my fucking one ear, eh my my right eye, I keep fucking tearing out of this shit. Anyway, they, doctor said it'd get back normal eventually. Hope so. It's kinda starting to. But I think that's cause I was smoking, oh eh I had few chances I could, I'm fucking homeless, I'm, I got no money. But there was a few chances I got opportunity to smoke some weed and that really did relieve me. Fucking weed actually re- relieves family feuds, you know what? Family feuds, people start fucking laughing and giggling and shit instead of hating on each other, blah blah blah, whatever, whatever. But anyway, how am I gonna pay these motherfuckers? My oppressors, I I pay them back with free rent? What the fuck? I'm paying back with free rent and I'm paying back with family reunion. And I pay them back with, look, we're kings, motherfuckers. We're kings. We just haven't been given the kingdom yet. But if we can be trusted with this shit, if we can prove it, we can be trusted with it because we revolve everything around making a big fucking deal that the kingdom just turned the fuck over. Jason just took the fuck over. Make a big fucking deal that this is the restoration of all things. Now, and I'm no fucking crazy church fanatic, but this is the restoration of all things. When you read my book, The House of Jason, when you start spreading this shit, when people start fucking talking to me, when people start gossiping about me, I'm gonna turn fucking gossip into the the biggest fucking medicine ever. Even shit the government's been spying on us. Fucking leak that shit, leak that shit. Tell the people that I did anything wrong. Dumb motherfuckers. Anyway. It's in your hands. You gotta start gossiping, you gotta start talking, you gotta get the conversations started. And a family reunion will come. The free rent will come. Legalize marijuana eh eh to the point where like you can't, eh there's no, no justification. The entire legal system will change. Because I said so. Jason, the fucking victim that took over the fucking world. No bullshit. No bullshit. Medicinal marijuana legalized instantly because I said, look, no one can fucking persecute from this fucking point on. This is family fucking reunion. And there's so many of our family that's locked up over bullshit laws. They didn't do any fucking cruddy, no cruddy at all. They did nothing wrong to anyone. You better lock the fucking pharmaceutical manufacturers from the big wig companies before you ever touch my children. And I'm fucking dead serious about this shit. Fucking stone cold, stu- ma! What? Ma, shut up, I'm recording this and I gotta fucking put it on YouTube. Anyway, my my, I mean, we don't I I'm wasting time, ma, I'm wasting, this is like, I only got so much space on my comp- on my little tiny fucking computer thing. Anyway, the fuck was I saying? This, this all rests on you. This all rests on you. There's so much more that I could say. There's so much more that I will say. But I'm telling you, this bullshit kingdom, whoever told you that you had to fucking pay to live? I didn't ask to be born, you didn't ask to be born, did you? Whoever told you you had to fucking pay to live? My children suffer. My family suffers, my neighbors suffer because all this bullshit, bullshit fucking dismiss-